Including those like, why did you go? You can ask.
Why should go?
Hmm?
Camera.
Not while you're talking. Okay.
Five seconds. Three, two, one.
Welcome. My name's Carl Hefty and tonight I will be talking to former Missoula city councilman, Bob Lucino. He's had a chance to have some interesting travels in the, some recent years and we're kinda interested in his life and just, I guess he went to Ireland two years ago. Tell us about that, Bob.
Well, Carl, actually, actually it was Northern Ireland and, which is of course part of larger Ireland. And I went over in July of nineteen ninety-two and August with a group of Missoula teenagers. There were five teenagers from Big Sky and Sentinel High Schools and three adults as well, and I was one. And the purpose of the visit was to hook up with about sixty foreign nationals from about ten countries, including Hungary, Poland, Estonia, Lithuania, Canada, the United States, France, Belgium. Can't remember all of them, but those were some of them. Yeah, and most of the, most of the folks were seventeen, eighteen years old and as I say, there were some adults that went with them. And the project was organized through a Northern Irish organization, or I should say, through an international organization of which Northern Ireland is a part, and that's called Youth for Christ. And there's a Youth for Christ chapter here in Missoula, which is how the Missoula contingent became tied in with this larger international mission. And the purpose of the group and the, and the project was to be witnesses for peace, dialogue, understanding in Northern Ireland and to try and understand the sectarian conflict that has been there and most especially, the primary purpose was just to be Christians and see what being Christian looked like in Northern Ireland, especially in a place where that has become very obscured in the midst of their sectarian conflict.
Now, what effect did your Christianity have on the situation there or, and what did you, what did you perceive of the?
Well, I think, I think what helped me personally was the research that I did before going. I did a lot of reading about Irish history and there, you know, you can be in any room, anywhere and ask folks if there's any Irish ancestry, chances are you'll always see a few hands go up. And why is it, for instance, that so many millions of Irish people came to the United States and as opposed to say another ethnic group in Europe? Why? And perhaps it's because they had more reasons to leave, not that they really wanted to if they had to, because of the suffering that they had endured for so long. And so I think the research really helped me understand a bit of why, but I had, I've had some lifelong questions about the conflict in Northern Ireland between Catholics and Protestants. My own maternal grandfather was a Catholic Irishman who came over with his brother in eighteen sixty-five to Philadelphia and carved out a new life for themselves and I'd, you know, I had my own family stories about that. And so for a chance for me to go back to my own roots was personally really interesting and fascinating. And my, my own grandfather was from right near Belfast, which is right where we were going. And so when we arrived, we were, I would say that, I think it was the first six days we were just kinda trying to orient ourselves to the culture, to learning how to walk, walk on the left when your natural tendency is to walk on the right, which is, you know, has everything to do with the fact that they drive on the left there, the English system. And just, you know, kinda getting rid of your jet lag and, and so on. And so during those six days, we had an opportunity to meet the larger, the members of the larger team. And then at the, on the sixth day, all hundred and fifty of us were divided into approximately nine groups, each one having an international flavor of at least four or five national, national representations present on the team. And we were dispersed to about nine locations around Northern Ireland. And I was on a team that was sent to a city called Lurgan, which at one time was the linen capital of Ireland and very, very polarized city. It's about half Catholic and half Protestant and perhaps because it's about fifty-fifty in the division, it, it has given, you know, grounds for a lot of conflict there as well. In fact, nine months before we got there, the IRA had bombed half the downtown, of which half the storefronts, office buildings were either damaged or destroyed.
Incredible.
At each end of the downtown, which is about the length of Missoula's downtown, there's a big metal gate, swinging metal gate, that is locked and unlocked during business hours of the town by British soldiers carrying machine guns, automatic weapons. There's two types of authority, armed authority in Northern Ireland. There's the British Army and secondly, there is the Northern Irish Police Force, which is called the Royal Ulster Constabulary. And so it was pretty.
Now, this was nineteen ninety-two, right?
Summer of ninety-two.
Now, is the situation still about the same? Has it changed at all now?
Oh, it's, it's about the same. I mean, the situation has been the same for hundreds of years. Really, up until about eleven seventy-five A.D., Ireland was self-governing and they governed themselves and they had their own unique form of government, which was very decentralized in nature. And I think because it was so decentralized and, and not unified in the sense that we would think of as a unified country, it also caused them to become vulnerable to foreign invasion. And they had dealt with invasions from, for instance, the Danes who invaded Ireland on and off and, but more recently in eleven seventy-five, it was the Anglo-Normans who came over. And as the years went on from eleven seventy-five through the nineteen hundreds, Ireland became a colony of Great Britain. And in the early nineteen twenties, there was an uprising called the Easter Rising, Easter Uprising at the end of World War One. And Ireland was finally granted its independence. However, in the north part of Ireland, where there was heavy concentrations of Protestants, where a lot of the industry was, for instance, shipbuilding in Belfast, very famous industry. The Titanic was built in Belfast, for example. The Protestant majority lobbied hard to remain in the British Commonwealth, to remain part of Great Britain and the United Kingdom. And so the nine ancient counties of Ulster or Northern Ireland were reduced to six counties where the Protestant majority was heaviest. And those six counties today comprise what we know of as Northern Ireland or Ulster. And they have chosen and they asked in the early twenties to, as they say, be part of Great Britain. On the other hand, the rest of the counties south, including Donegal to the northwest, became part of the Republic of Ireland, which was granted independence and became self-governing in the early nineteen twenties after eight hundred years of British rule. And their dream finally came true to have home rule. And why is it so, why is there so much conflict, you might ask, in Northern Ireland? That's what I asked. Why, why do Catholics and Protestants have such animosities toward each other?
Now, now, this didn't all begin with the Reformation, did it? Or has it begun more recently?
The conflict between Catholics and Protestants, I think you, you can really trace it back to the twelfth century when the English came. Not that there were Protestants present then, but when, when a Catholic in Northern Ireland thinks of a Protestant, you know, part of the, part of the label of being a Protestant is also, I think, a certain amount of identification with Great Britain, not just your, it's not just a theological or doctrinal identity to be a Catholic or Protestant in Northern Ireland. What I realize is that it's really a socio-economic, social identity. The, the words and the identities, identities of Catholic and Protestant sum up a lot about a person. It sums up their politics, it sums up their religion, it sums up their ancestry. So you asked about the Reformation. Well, we know the Reformation occurred and began in the fifteen hundreds with Martin Luther and some of the other great reformers in Germany and, and Central and Eastern Europe, Western Europe. And what happened was the first reform, the, the first intrusion into Ireland of, of the reformed faith came in a rather violent way. And by that I mean, and an intrusive way, in that Cromwell, who had a lot of sway in British politics in the early sixteen hundreds, came up with an idea to colonize Northern Ireland especially, and he called it the Ulster Plantation. And in about sixteen oh seven, I believe, he rounded up and encouraged by and large Scottish Presbyterian reformers to come over to Northern Ireland, to settle the land, to become a part of the agrarian society there. And they were lured over and, and consequently, there was a great disenfranchisement, a great displacement of the indigenous people who, you know, when, when, when the Plymouth Plantation, for instance, was formed in Massachusetts or the Jamestown Plantation in Virginia, who was living in those places? Well, in Plymouth, actually, there was nobody in that immediate land. There was a tribe, but they had all been wiped out by an epidemic, we're told by the historians. But what happened in Northern Ireland was that the land was largely improved already. There were Catholic, Irish Catholics there who had titles, who had farmhouses and silos and livestock and homes and everything, and they were forcibly removed from Northern Ireland. They were marched off to the badlands of Ireland, which are on the west side. And the land was seized by force by Cromwell in behalf of the Protestant, largely Scottish Protestants who came in and took claim to that land. And so to this day, you'll hear, what I heard was, one of the nicknames for Protestants are planters. When I was talking to some teenagers and they said, yeah, well, the planters over there. I said, what do you mean planters? They said, well, the Protestants. I said, why do you call them planters? They said, well, because for hundreds of years, they've been planting their crops on our ancestors' land.
So it sounds like they're kind of living in the past still.
Yeah, yeah. And because, because people live in the past, it's hard to have a future. And that's obviously, it's not just happening in Northern Ireland. You know, pick a continent, pick a country where one people group hasn't oppressed another people group. And to the degree that we remember our wounds, can't get over them, or don't wanna offer forgiveness, to the degree that reconciliation is not possible, then we're just, I think, doomed to an endless cycle of retribution.
Right. Now, tell us how, how your group who went, what kind of, what kind of impact or what kind of involvement did you have in that, in the, in the unification of the two sides?
Well.
Or did you?
You know, one of the great paradoxes for me in understanding this conflict is these people who are at odds with each other have, you know, Christian identities, Protestant, Catholic, and why has there been such non-Christian behavior on the part of some, not all? You know, even, even violent, you know, conflict? And so, you know, someone's gonna come from the outside, a bunch of well-meaning Americans like us from Missoula or people from these other countries, and we're gonna talk about Christianity? So I really went with listening. I tried to go with listening ears. I did this research to try and understand what the roots of the conflict are. Our objective simply were to listen and understand and to sort out what, what is Christian and what is religious? And when I say religious, I, I kinda have a negative connotation for even, you know, the, you know, when someone says, oh, that person is a religious person. Well, words mean different things to different people and that term, to me, has always had a negative connotation. Because when I think of someone who's religious, a lot of times I think of someone who might be bigoted, might be narrow-minded. And I, I really don't think Christ was that way, as I've read his life and his words. And so I, when I think of someone who's religious in the, in the negative sense of the word, I think that they haven't really truly come in, come into an understanding of the true meaning of Christianity and.
Which is down to earth.
Which is really simple. Christ said two things, love God with your whole heart and love your neighbor as yourself. And if, I think if the world could just do that, maybe we'd have a little bit less conflict.
Simple solution to the problem.
Yeah. I mean, I think of the story where someone came up to him and said, how many times should I forgive my brother, you know, who's offended me? Seven times? And Jesus said, no, seventy times seven. So in terms of the Irish history, anyone who reads the history can clearly see that the indigenous Irish Catholics have suffered a great deal through the centuries as a result of the colonial, you know, agenda of England and English politics. And I'm, you know, it's, it's in a way not fair for me to judge. I'm not judging England here. It was a different time and a different culture, but there are wounds of the past. And I think the only answer is in forgiveness, exactly what Christ said. And in order to have a future, whether it's Bosnia or Croatia or Palestine or South Africa or Northern Ireland or Rwanda, I think forgiveness is the answer. To break that cycle.
Do you sense that the people are willing to forgive or are they just harboring that anger?
I think there is a willingness. I met so many wonderful Catholic people and Protestant Irish on both sides who are just people, they just wanna, you know, have a good life and get along. But what's happened is that, that the conflict has become institutionalized over the years, especially since the troubles began, as they're called in the nineteen seventies, when they, when they experienced a revival into a violent conflict. And you have fringe groups, fringe paramilitaries from each side that keep it going, that get their hands on the guns and get their hands on the money and.
The IRA.
Well, the IRA representing the Catholic side and then the Protestant paramilitaries also have their groups, like the Ulster Defense Force, for instance. Both of them are outlawed by the British. Now, what, what role does, does the British government have in this now? Well, in the nineteen twenties, they never made any promises to the Protestants that they would remain forever. They simply said, we will, you may, you may, you may remain in the British Commonwealth as long as the majority of Northern Irish citizens would like us to stay here. Well, because the Protestant majority has been so concentrated, highly concentrated, they sort of have always had the vote, so it kinda stayed in that status. But, you know, the, the British Army feels, I mean, the British government feels bound by their word of the nineteen twenties to stay. They feel responsible. And frankly, my own feeling is if they suddenly withdrew, it would leave a vacuum. And I'm not so sure that that vacuum wouldn't be replaced by, you know, by paramilitaries exploiting it. And maybe even more people would get killed. And the status today, of course, is that, that there is talk of peace and the British government's working hard, the Republic of Ireland's working hard, President Clinton has offered his good offices, you know, to mediate and bring about reconciliation in Northern Ireland. So perhaps even on a political level, there's, there's room for hope. My own personal feeling is though, apart from, apart from really coming grips, coming to grips with this issue of forgiveness and breaking the past scars with forgiveness, people, you know, person to person, I, I don't have a lot of hope that it'll ever change.
So there is a solution and there's a, there's a hope that they'll find it.
And I think it's an age-old hope and I think that the hope and solution can be found in the simple message of, of Jesus. I'm not talking about institutionalized religiousness, I'm talking about his message. And, and out of that time there, I was able to build some bridges between both sides in the city I was in. And from that, those contacts, I formed a transatlantic committee to bring over six Catholic teenagers and six Protestant teenagers to Missoula. You may remember last summer, twelve of, twelve of those kids came and great good came out of that. Two separate groups that came here left as one group of good friends and they're gonna be meeting and have been meeting on a monthly basis in their city to be catalysts and agents for peace and reconciliation and spiritual renewal in their own home churches and across the community. And the British government helped provide money to bring them here, for which I'm real thankful. And that was a real meaningful experience for the host families here in Missoula that participated. And by the way, there's a second group also of Northern Irish kids that came over. John Agner here in town work, had worked very hard and is working very hard on a yearly basis to bring kids over and put them in host families. They're a different program than ours is, but they also do great good. That's called Project Children. And John Agner and his people are to be really commended for what they're doing to bring peace in Northern Ireland.
Right. That's nice to see there's a lot of, lot of relation between the two, two sides there. Now, tell us about your trip to Estonia and Latvia. I understand this past spring you had a chance to go over there.
I did. See, now that I'm off the city council, I have more time to do these things. Yes, in the spring of last year, I had an opportunity to go to two former republics of the Soviet Union, Latvia and Estonia. They are part of the three Baltic states and they're called Baltic states because they're on the Baltic Sea, the south coast of the Baltic Sea. If you were looking at a world map and you were looking at the Scandinavian countries with Norway to the west and then Sweden wedged between Finland and Norway and Finland on the east, just as the crow flies south from the southern tip of Finland, if you flew across the Bay of Finland there, which is part of the larger Baltic Sea, you would, you would arrive in Estonia, Tallinn, Estonia. And I went with two other men from North Carolina. The three of us flew to Frankfurt and then on to, on to Riga, Latvia. And we spent six days in Riga and then from Riga, we went on to Tallinn, Estonia and from Tallinn, Estonia to a very rural, small hamlet on the Russian border called Achya, Estonia. And the reason for our trip there was to be of assistance to some Christian churches who are now emerging after fifty years of pretty severe repression and oppression from the Soviet government. And the particular churches that we visited came as a result of contacts that one of these other gentlemen had. He's a Methodist pastor in North Carolina and in fact, had been to Estonia a few years prior, actually prior to Estonia becoming independent back in nineteen ninety. My interest in the Baltic states really started as a result of the International Choral Festival here in Missoula. In nineteen eighty-seven, we had a world-class choir come to Missoula called Ave Sol from Riga, Latvia, and I was involved in coordinating host families for the Latvian choir. And in nineteen ninety, I was involved in coordinating host families for the Tallinn Chamber Choir out of Estonia. So personally, on a personal level, I had.
A lot of pride.
I had some, yeah, I had some friendships with, with members of those two choirs. And as a result of meeting them and having them stay in my home and homes of some of my friends here in Missoula, I really, I really developed an interest in their countries and really had a heart for their, for their plight of the last fifty years. And they're just very wonderful people. Certainly, boy, if anyone in Missoula that heard them sing was in for a real treat. Some of the best choral singing I've ever heard are from Baltic choirs. So I made some contacts with the choir members and in fact, in Riga, greeting us were three friends from Ave Sol. And the same thing in Tallinn, when we landed in Tallinn, a couple of members of the Tallinn Chamber Choir greeted us. And so I was able to, to catch up with them. Specifically in Riga, Latvia, we brought, we, while we were writing them ahead of time as a result of these contacts, to pastors of various churches and I said to them, what do you need? Well, is there any way we could be of assistance? And so they requested certain materials in the way of medical, some medical helps and some textbooks, some publications for children, Bible study things, things that would be useful in their Sunday school curriculums, types of, we offered ten different subjects for seminars and teachings that we ourselves could provide. I've had some theological training and one of the other men, as I said, was a pastor. So we offered these ten different subjects and then they in turn, from the three different churches that we met with and worked with in these two countries, they asked us to focus on different, these different areas of teaching. And so we also put on these seminars. And it was a very, very rewarding experience.
So it sounds like despite all the repression that's gone on, that the economic and the political and the religious repression that's been going on, it sounds like the arts and the churches has, has managed to.
Well, the arts really did, yeah. Well, it, there's always been a real appreciation for the arts in, in the Baltics and even under the Soviet system, they, the Soviet system themselves, I guess, could be commended, you might say, to, I mean, they certainly provided funding to, to bring Ave Sol Choir, you know, over here. I think that they had some funding from the Soviet government back in eighty-seven when they came. But, yeah, it was, it was interesting just to, to talk with these people face to face and say, what was it like, for instance, being a Christian? You know, in a communist country, we in the West have heard, I had heard stories, what was it like for you to be a Christian? You know, we heard stories of persecution and was that stuff really true? And by and large, the answer was yes, and they were right in the process of, of gaining title to the properties, to the buildings, to their churches that, that they had to hand over to the Soviet government after World War Two. For instance, the Methodist church, one of the Methodist churches in Latvia was subdivided into apartments and the sanctuary was turned into a gymnasium. The foyer to the entrance of this church was turned into bathrooms. And there was an elderly gentleman that just sort of kept the thing going and through all those years and, and now these people, there's just a handful left, you know, but they, they stayed true and, and they're now, you know, as I say, getting, trying to get title back to the buildings and, and bring them back to full usefulness that they were prior to World War Two, before the Russians seized control of their government. They were independent nations. So there's a lot of hope, you know, for the future, but it's cautious in both countries. They're very small countries and they have, they've always been kind of at the mercy of larger countries around them. And I couldn't help but think of Northern Ireland when I was over there because, you know, ethnic Latvians in Latvia or ethnic Estonians in Estonia, they have their horror stories, they have their wounds of the past of how the members of their family might have been deported, you know, under the Stalinist regime. And so it's really some universal dynamics that you can begin to see happening, you know, in all these countries where forgiveness is needed. And one of the controversial things in, in the Baltic states, for instance, has been, you know, in their desire to recapture their own cultural identity, they have been enacting legislation to bring back their cultural identity, but sometimes at the expense of disenfranchising the ethnic Russians that moved in during the Stalinist days. Thousands of ethnic Russians came into Riga, Latvia, for instance, under Stalin. It's a, it's a very large industrial area. And so how about those people, you know, and can they be citizens still? A lot of questions to ask and so.
Ah, gosh.
Yeah, it's, there's, there's, there's room for forgiveness there. And what about our own society? You know, what have we done here in America? We can find parallels. I can, I can find parallels to, to, you know, Native Americans. Whose land was this? You know, in Montana? Are we any different, for instance, than, than the stories that I just told that happened in Northern Ireland or in the Baltics? I think that's why I say on every continent, there's a place for, for talking and dialogue and forgiveness and reconciliation.
And since the past can't be changed, it seems like forgiveness must be the key. And since the past can't be changed, it seems like forgiveness must be the key to, to solve, solve most of our problems nowadays.
Yeah, being willing to ask for forgiveness. For instance, if I'm, you know, I'll just speak for our own culture, maybe. Maybe I, as a descendant of a, of an Anglo-European, you know, do I need to ask forgiveness of someone whose land I took? Or someone who I have offended even personally? We could bring this close to home pretty quickly, even in Montana. And I, I just personally think that Jesus is the only answer to break that kind of a cycle. In my own personal belief system, I've, I've found that in my own life, that when I needed to, when I had been hurt by someone and felt justly hurt, I could sit and stew on it and be angry and seek revenge or give rise to hatred. Or I could seek forgiveness and reconciliation. And in myself, it's difficult. Only in Christ can I do it.